You all said Commissioner Noguetz.
Thank you. In accordance with California Governor's Executive Order N 2520 regarding the Brown Act and guidance from the California Department of Public Health on gatherings, this meeting is taking place entirely by teleconference via Zoom. The council chambers is closed. The public is accessing the meeting via the Santa Ana YouTube channel or the city's website. The commission members and I, along with the executive director, regarding recording secretary and city staff are in different locations. Please bear with us as technology may disrupt the flow of the meeting. Good evening, everyone. I call to order the April 29th, 2021 Parks, Recreation and Community Services Commission Special Meeting at 4:07. Will the recording secretary please call roll?
Thank you to our person. Commissioner Nelson. Commissioner Gomez.
Present.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Present.
Commissioner Mowet.
Present.
Commissioner Torreblanca.
Present.
Commissioner Wu. Excuse. Commissioner Gutierrez.
Present.
Present. You have a form.
Whoever you are, if you would please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Tonight, we have one presentation on the agenda regarding the Parks Master Plan presented by Cindy Mendoza from MIG. Does the commission have any questions regarding the presentation?
Hi, Commissioner. This is Lisa Rudolph, Executive Director, and I'd like to introduce Cindy Mendoza. She is with MIG. She's going to provide a presentation about our Parks Master Plan. We hired MIG, oh, gosh, seems like years ago, but it hasn't been that long. But they've been working diligently on our Parks Master Plan, and we're now getting into the public comment phase. And so she's just going to step you through and ask you a lot of questions because you're very important in this process. And we are relying on you. And so we'll let Cindy and her staff take this over. You'll have time to ask questions, and she's going to be asking questions of you. So thank you very much, Cindy, for being here again. Thanks.
Of course. Thank you so much for having me. And commissioners, it's my honor and privilege to be able to work with the city to help you with the Parks Master Plan. I'm going to share my screen, and we're going to give you a quick overview of the master planning process, and then talk a bit about the analysis that we're going to do. And then, as Lisa mentioned, we're going to have an opportunity to address your questions about the planning process and ask you a few discussion questions, so you can provide direction here early on at the beginning of the planning process to help make sure we address the right things. You know, this is a really exciting opportunity for the city of Santa Ana. It is their first Parks Master Plan. Besides parks, it'll address the investment needed in recreation facilities, trails, programs, events, and open space, all the services provided by the department. It is a long-range plan. That means it's going to look into the future down the road for the next 10 years to see what type of enhancements are needed, but also create a shorter-term implementation schedule moving forward. We are just getting started. As you see from the graphic here, it's a four-phase planning process. We're towards the end of Phase One, where we've been evaluating existing parks, looking at the condition of amenities and facilities. We're about to look at recreation programs and operations and use that to set a foundation for an assessment of community needs. That's where we start conducting outreach and doing a technical analysis that helps us really understand where residents want the park system to be moving forward. And that takes us into Phase Three, where we identify recommendations for the park and recreation system and really establish priority projects, recognizing that funding is always constrained, and we need to make sure we're funding the top types of projects that the community would like to see. And we take all that information and summarize it into a new Parks Master Plan that'll provide guidance for the future.
Cindy, I'm sorry to bother you. Commissioner Gomez, are you having issues? I saw that you raised your hand.
Yes, I'm hearing time lapse. I don't know if anybody else is. So I'm hearing both voices. I'm hearing.
Okay, turn your video off for the YouTube video, and you should be okay.
She's still talking right now, and then she's going to start talking, so it's going to overlap. But I'm just, as long as I'm the only one with the issue, I don't mind.
Yeah, what you may have clicked the YouTube video on the website. If you just close the video, then you won't have that double, that feedback.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, Cindy, thank you.
Excellent. So just very quickly, I wanted to walk you through some of the key tasks in the master plan analysis. We're going to start by looking at the existing inventory, as I mentioned, looking at the assets that you have and the resources, and then use that to move forward and identify community needs and priorities. That's not only done through community outreach, but a technical analysis of the system that looks at those unserved and underserved areas of your community. For example, we've already heard and know that the central part of the city doesn't have as many parks or recreation resources as some of the other places. So that's where we start to dial into that. We use that information to create that long-range vision, looking forward. Where do you want to be 10 years down the road? You know, what's the right mix of trails with new parks, added amenities and facilities to your existing parks, and just taking care of things through improved park maintenance and asset management? And then we use that information to create a more strategic directive, set of recommendations that are going to guide improvements across the system. And then leading to the last part, which is the most critical part, which is really about establishing priorities for the park and recreation system, will want your guidance to help do that moving forward, again, to make sure that we are identifying the funding needed and the funds that'll be needed to move it forward into the future. This plan is being developed in conjunction or just following up with the general plan update that is occurring now. Just want to point out that the general plan looks at policies citywide. So the parks and open space element is just one piece of the general citywide plan. So it looks at things at a higher policy level. We take that information and really match it with community feedback to bring things down to the ground. So not just at the policy level, but at individual sites, individual neighborhoods. What are the needs identified? We're going to do this through a combination of both virtual and in-person activities to really be clear on community needs. Making sure that the master plan represents the community is super important to us. So we've set up an engagement plan and set up some engagement goals to help guide the way that we're doing outreach. So in addition to speaking with you all, we're going to be meeting with a variety of groups. We have an advisory board that I'll tell you about momentarily. But really, our intent is to meet not only as many people as possible, but also a broad cross-section of the community. So people of different ages, genders, socioeconomic status, language, racial and ethnic backgrounds, different geographies and neighborhoods across the city, paying attention to those underrepresented groups that don't traditionally have a voice in the planning process. That way, we can make sure that parks and recreation opportunities are available for all. Before we go further, I want to call your attention to this fabulous website that is set up as kind of a one-stop shop to get information about the parks planning process. So if you haven't had a chance to check it out yet, please go online to the department's webpage, look at Parks Master Plan, and what you'll find is a site where you can easily get to the online survey that's available now, a place for people to sign up for the mailing list, and a chance to get a variety of details about the planning process, from a fact sheet to a full library of documents that will be provided here. If there are people in your jurisdiction or an opportunity for you to talk to people in the public about this planning process, point them towards this site because it's a good way for them to learn about opportunities to be involved. Right now, you may have already seen that we have a survey that is out, an opportunity for residents to talk about ways to improve parks. It's available not only in English, but in Spanish and Vietnamese. We've got a lot of information going out to alert people to this opportunity to take the survey, including some utility or water bill inserts that are going to be distributed across the community. So using the QR codes or the link that's shown there, you know, please take the survey if you haven't already, but also help us promote it to residents. Besides the survey, we're also about to launch an activity that involves different community groups from across the city. This is one way that we make sure that we're reaching some of those underrepresented residents, as well as key stakeholders across the community. So we call these our community partners and ambassadors because they help us reach out to different demographics across the community. And I should have mentioned there that we're also bringing on board a new advisory group who's going to be our technical champions in terms of helping us make sure our analysis is on track, that we're going to talk about up here momentarily. But it represents not only city staff, committees and commissions, and liaisons to them, but also different community groups moving forward. So turning towards our analysis tasks, you know, it's important to realize that even though we're calling this the Parks Master Plan, it really addresses several different things. Some of it is physical system infrastructure, you know, including park land and open space and natural features, but also things such as your recreation facilities, your playgrounds, your sports courts, your sports fields, splash pads, dog parks, and then the amenities, things like the benches and tables and lighting and parking that's in your park system. Trails are an important piece, not only to provide park access, but also as a recreation element and also an active transportation element that we'll be addressing through the planning process. And then we also pay special attention to those larger major facilities, such as community centers and senior centers, those buildings that require a higher level of investment, and then look at both the programs, events, and kind of maintenance and services needed to keep this system sound and operational. Sometimes it's not as important what we look at, but how we look at things. And you all know that everyone brings a different perspective to what's important around parks and recreation. So with all of the things that I just mentioned that we'll be looking at, we'll be looking at these in a variety of different ways, including ones that focus on equity and access, ensuring that everybody across the city has opportunities to benefit from parks and facilities. We'll also consider activity and health, those fitness opportunities, but also, as we know, in the COVID era, just how important parks and recreation are, just being outdoors are important to our quality of life. We'll look at sustainability. In other words, both the natural resources that are there and how to sustain and enhance their ecological function, but also how you continue to use resources in a wise way to support the park system. We also know that park support, not only community identity, city identity, but also neighborhood identity. So we'll look at things such as the way that art and different elements in a park system really connect and engage nearby neighbors and residents from across the city. We'll consider stewardship. In other words, how do you take care of your existing assets? It's nice to have them, but how do you make sure they are well-maintained moving forward? And those assets include not only the physical, you know, park features, but also the natural park features. The city does an amazing job, for example, of taking care of its tree canopy. That stewardship is critical. Besides looking at the existing assets, we look at how the city is changing and growing over the next 10 years, and what type of park system enhancements are needed to respond to that new growth and new trends in recreation. We acknowledge the fact that the city doesn't do all of this alone. They are amazing leaders in terms of what's provided in parks and rec opportunities, but at the same time, they partner with others. They get support from the committees and commissions here that provide guidance as well, but then partner with entities such as the school district and some of the community organizations. And then finally, we'll look at things through a funding lens, knowing that funding hasn't been there to do everything that the city would like to do moving forward. So looking for new sources of funding, as well as ways to continue to pay for and enhance the park system. You know, I mentioned earlier the general plan that looked at things at more of a policy level. We'll look at things citywide like the general plan does, but we also look at site solutions as well as city solutions. In other words, considering the details of the fact that you have 363 acres, 48 different sites, 22 miles of trails, and so many different amenities and facilities, we start to look at what's important to make sure that you're enhancing all of these individual elements so that across the entire city, you have the right mix of parks and programs and services going forward. So I showed you this graphic earlier, and I mentioned the four-phase planning process. What we've added here, and you can see, are the number of different tasks that we are going to be undertaking over the next year to develop this plan. So it is an iterative process. There will be further additional check-ins with you all moving forward, so you'll get updates about the planning process. But the important piece here is that we are really at the beginning. The tasks in blue are the ones that are completed already. So you have an opportunity today to really give us some guidance and direction. They're going to help us understand how to carry out this planning process moving forward and make sure we're addressing all the right questions. As we move forward, there's also ways that you can support the Parks Master Planning Process, including by connecting us to, you know, friends, neighbors, residents, teammates, others that you represent as part of the commission, to make sure that they are involved in this process, and then helping us continue to communicate the importance of the park and recreation system and supporting community livability. So if this will pause, and we're going to take questions, but just want to give you a preview that we do have some discussion questions coming up next that we'll have a chance to be able to talk to you about some priorities across the system.
I have a question. Um, so we were, and we are going to talk about this recent issue about handball courts being removed from parks. And I was wondering if that's considered, we've been calling it an amenity, or at least I have, but if you would consider that actually a recreation facility, just because the icons, they looked different.
Yes, the handball courts that you mentioned, we call them a rec facility, but they can be called a recreation amenity as well. What they are is a, you know, type of equipment that's in parks in order to enhance play. And we know that trends are changing and that that handball courts are not as well-used in some places as they were previously. So there's an opportunity to think about what to do differently there.
And I think, you know, I call things park amenities. So a playground is an amenity, a pool is an amenity. So I'm sorry for the confusion, but.
Thanks.
Well, Cindy, I want to thank you for the presentation, and I think we can maybe just go into the questions that you wanted to ask the commission and get their feedback.
That sounds great. I'm going to share my screen again. This time, I am going to share a different item with you. We are going to use a tool today that's called Mural to be able to collect your insights and impressions with regards to three key questions. We already addressed questions about the planning process, but if you have others, please throw them in. If not, we're going to talk a bit first about your vision. And let me make this a little bit bigger to make sure that you all can see these questions effectively. Your vision for city parks, facilities, trails, open space, and programs. We'll talk about what a vision means. Then we're going to talk a bit about opportunities and challenges that the plan should address, and then we're going to end with a conversation around the most pressing needs for Santa Ana. What you'll see is that these are on different scales. So when we talk about vision, that's really aspirational. It's what you hope to achieve, those values that you want this plan to address. And then those opportunities and challenges are a little bit more detailed. They may be specific things like how to address the handball court situation. Now, when we talk about pressing needs, a lot of times, the city has larger needs that we need to take into account in the park system as well, such as how do we promote parks and recreation across the community? How do we make sure parks reflect the city's identity? How do we address homelessness in parks, for example? So there'll be a chance for us to discuss all of those, but I really want to start with regards to these keywords on the vision. The really fun part of this is that my colleague, Roxanne Borso Bertrand, is going to be taking notes as you all talk. And so you'll see that in these blue spaces are going to appear words or paraphrased versions of what you're telling us so that we have a record for the future. And I'm not sure if the chair prefers to facilitate this conversation, or whether you each want to take turns, but we are welcome to please add in any of the key words that you would like to see reflected in this plan moving forward, or your aspirations for the park system.
I think it would be beneficial to maybe just go in order based on word, if that's agreeable to everyone. So I'll go ahead and I'll start. Some keywords that I think of when I'm visioning parks and recreation is obviously sustainability, community, engaging. I also do like the word integrated, if that makes sense, integrated parks. That's, those are all the words that I can think of right now. We'll move on to word two.
Fabulous. And if I may, integrated, are you looking at how it creates a cohesive system?
Yes, making sure that the parks are actually integrated into the landscape, that we're introducing foliage and different plants and trees that are going to help the community, not just having something that looks pretty, but it's also giving back to the community.
Excellent. Those are all great words. And do we have, are you identifying a next person?
Yes, word number two, which is Angie, Commissioner Gomez.
Hi. So before I give you my words, and I don't know if this was a question I should have addressed before, my worry is that not a lot of our residents are able to take the survey. How are we, what are, or what can we do? And I'm not saying that you guys should do it. I'm more than happy to help. But how can we kind of gap where we could really get our residents' feedback? Because I feel we won't be able to if we just put it online or we have to scan a barcode. Is there something that we could do maybe to really engage those that are using the parks?
Indeed. And I'm really glad you asked that question. One of the things that I didn't mention that the community ambassadors and community partners are going to help do is distribute paper versions of the questionnaire so that those people who don't have online access still have an opportunity to take it. They'll also be available at different events or at city facilities, such as community and recreation centers, so that people have access. We're noting on the utility insert, that water bill insert that's going out to everyone across the city, that if they prefer to have a paper questionnaire and can't pick one up, there's a phone number they can call and have one sent to them as well. So lots of opportunities there. And beyond the survey or questionnaire itself, we will have other opportunities through the planning process to get involved. So especially as we go back and start to prioritize projects, we're planning some activities such as pop-ups. Hopefully, we'll all be able to be back in the parks by then with gathering restrictions removed, so that we have a chance that while people are in the parks, they can weigh in on their priorities as well.
That's perfect, Cindy. Please count on me to help, okay? Thank you. So for me, some keywords are safe. That's the first thing that came to my mind, at least to my local park. Um, welcoming and clean would be my words.
Great words. Certainly welcoming, inclusive are things that we are hearing about all the time, and safe, clean, and green is heard so often, it kind of rolls off the tongue in terms of, so I appreciate those comments.
And then we can go on to word three, which I believe is Commissioner Way.
Yeah, um, some words that come to mind are accessibility. Well, open space is already in the question, but definitely like open. Another word that comes to mind is shade. As we all know, it's just, it's getting hotter. And a really cool solution for that is planting more trees, and that'll help alleviate the heat waves that are affecting people in, in a health way, and also just in a, in like, a natural way. And education, education is also another word that comes to mind, whether that's like environmental education or historical education about the, the land. And also intergenerational also comes to mind. I mean, like, I envision like, multiple generations of families enjoying the same open spaces.
Excellent. You guys are really good at this. You again hit on a number of things as we talk about making sure that park spaces are enjoyable for people of all ages and mixed generations. The shade issue, dealing with the heat across the system, and even the importance of the tree canopy. With regards to education, we've even had council members talk about what they call a think scape. How do we integrate those educational moments within parks, within the landscape for people? And certainly, the open space piece. And just out of curiosity, is that more about just open lawn areas, or is it more about natural resources for you and connections to nature?
I'd say more about natural resources, connections to nature.
Thank you for that clarification. That's one of those words like amenities and facilities that are often used a couple of interchangeable ways. So I wanted to clarify.
Perfect. And I believe we are, we're still missing Commissioner Nelson, correct?
That is correct, your person.
All right. And then Commissioner Wu.
Commissioner Wu is also up there.
Yes. So then we'll go ahead and we'll go to Commissioner Torreblanca.
All right. So touching on vision-wise, and while we were talking on education, I think it's a, right now, it's really our great opportunity for the park service to help build something that I think is lacking because of the pandemic. Unfortunately, a lot of students have been at home, just like on their computers and learning, and that takes care of education. And I think that's great. But I think what's missing between that and in schools, and then being in schools, is that social and emotional intelligence that they get. And I think providing activities, I'm really stepping up our game with having our locations provide like a full calendar of activities for students would be really imperative moving forward so that we can help build those leaders young. I really believe that the best thing we can do for the city is invest in our youth. And I think that I really want to help build that emotional intelligence through activities in our, in our programs, in our buildings.
Excellent. Certainly, there's a huge focus, not only on youth development, but youth leadership and community leadership moving forward, and then how we use the activities provided through parks and recreation to support social gatherings, connections, you know, foster a cohesive community. So I'd love that you have added those elements to this piece. Certainly, those activities in parks are just as important as the stuff and things that are in parks as well. Great comments.
And I believe that concludes all of the commissioners that are present.
We have the vice.
Your person. Yes, we have Vice Chair Ramirez.
I apologize. Thank you so much. Vice Ramires, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I do. So my key points are more, what can we do to portray the Uh, yeah, I do. Um, so my key points are more, what can we do to portray the community in the parks that we go to? Um, the things I see a lot in um San Ana and other other cities as well is parks tend to look similar over time. Nothing about them really sets them apart. So to me is I want to build something that is vibrant. It's got color, something cultural that both Santana is a huge uh advocate for, which is expressing oneself in in its own cultural, artistic perspectives and overall colors and and even musical things that we do. So I'd like to have a huge, a lot of opportunities, one for um to adding color to the parks. Um, add colors to have some vibrancy. Some people are driving around, they can not- notice and have like resemblance to the park, knowing that they're in Santana, not in just any other city park. Um, along with that, I also want to do something that has uh family-friendly activities that gets the community together. Um, not just getting the fa- uh one single family out of park, but getting the whole community to come together one day um out of the month, out of the half year, out of the whole year, to get together to do a a sporting event, a artistic event, a musical event, or even a a neighborhood um gathering to give advice on future projects and ideas that they want the commissioners and ca- council members to have on their back burner and on their mind so they can try to make those things come true. Um, to me, parks are kind of a central hub of the community. It's one way to, in a way, go to and understand what a community needs. Um, and it's, I think it was another keyword, which is engaging. Get, make sure that people are wanting to go to the park and not just by themselves, but with family and members, to know their neighbors, to know the people who are in the community and what they do and again, show who they are, some uh people of Santana.
All excellent points, and we're starting to see some things that are appearing a couple of times, which is why they're getting checkmarks uh where people have mentioned similar words. Um, great in terms of noting, you know, the family friendliness uh and the need to be able to get neighborhoods and others in the community together. Uh, I love the way you talk about this as a a hub for the community. Certainly those parks are important in that way. And just the sense of identity that you can capture through parks, that good color, that vibrancy, the sense of place, sense of character. Uh, great, all uh wonderful comments. Is there anything that is missing here now that we've heard from everyone with regards to these key words that we should add before we move to the next question? All right, then I'm gonna switch to the next question, but as I move this, I'm also gonna show you that comments about the planning process uh are being recorded as well, or your comments there, as well as any public comments we get after this presentation. So we're gonna move to the next question about opportunities and challenges. And what you'll see is that, let me scroll back. What we recognize is that some opportunities and challenges may be place-based or specific to a park or a part of the city. So we're gonna be able to locate those on the map if you want us to identify a specific place on the map. But the other thing that's fun is these are color-coded, so we're gonna be able to quickly see how many of your part or your comments are dealing with trails, for example, versus different amenities and facilities or the programs and events that are happening in parks. And there's already some comments that have been raised with the handball carts, for example, that appear here already. So I'll turn it back over to our chair to go ahead and uh ask the question with regards to what are those key opportunities and challenges that you think this plan needs to address?
Thank you. I think one of the biggest opportunities that we have is to make sure that the parks and the amenities that are added or refurbished, that they're giving back to the community. There's a lot of talk with Parks and Recreation about sustainability and these little, you know, eco mini verses. So I would love to have the opportunity to think about some community gardens, some, you know, things that we can put into the parks that will actually give back to the communities as well. Um, one of the challenges with that obviously is making sure that it's not going to create a problem in governing those amenities. Making sure that the materials and the resources that we're giving are accessible to everyone. Um, I do think one of the biggest challenges, and we've seen that with the handball court situation, is that there is majority of the community that is advocating for one thing, and then there's maybe one or two people who are claiming to speak for the community, but because of accessibility, because there's not really a way, especially during COVID, of getting the concerns out there, we've seen where um there's been some clashing ideas. So I do echo my uh commissioners' um uh hesitations, making sure that the surveys that we're giving out, making sure that we actually get the opinions and the concerns of the community where we don't just have a handful of people saying that they're speaking for the communities. And uh that's pretty much all that I have for that. We can go ahead and go to word two, which is Commissioner Gomez.
Thank you. Um, I think opportunities. I feel we have a lot of potential in our parks and it saddens me that I can't go to my parks because I don't feel safe to take my kids there. So I think opportunities for us is to really just evaluate every park. I know with the other commission we had, because a lot of the commissioners are new. We went around uh and looked at the parks and see what we could improve and what we just getting to know the parks a little bit better, but I feel like for me, safety is number one priority because I feel if the community doesn't feel safe, they're not gonna go. And I loved, I forgot what Commissioner said it, but he nailed it on the head when he said providing uh community relation programs like building actually community with the parks, I think that's huge. I know over here at Madison Park, which is my close uh park, when we do movie nights, we get tons of people. And but in itself, you know, the park's gonna be saved when you have a lot of people, when you have the park rangers. It's okay because we're all there as a community and I really believe it builds a strong relationship between parks and residents. So I feel we could take this opportunity to do more youth programming, more family programmings in the park. The city already does uh a lot of uh youth sports and stuff. I feel if it would be equally distributed through parks would be amazing. Really evaluating the parks that we do have and maybe what can we change with it? I think that would be important too. Right? So I I I don't think we should keep investing in like the same parks or repeat, kind of like we're just gonna clean everything up or make it um repair, but also expand the services that the park offers, I think is a really good opportunity. Challenges that I see happening, it's hard because how do we change that, right? How do we change people going there and doing drugs in their cars, at least in our park? Again, I don't, I can't speak to all the parks because I'm not in all the parks. But I know my local parks where we do have a large homeless problem, we do have people doing drugs in the um parking lot, and I'm glad that. We now have gates now, so they can't enter at night, and I think that's helped, but in the daytime, I think that's gonna be one of the challenges. How do we even start building community when our parks are being taken over already, right? I think that's a big challenge uh in itself. But I I would love to see uh our youth programs being implemented in our parks. I think another commissioner mentioned earlier, and you know what, he he nailed it because if we do that, where we have like a city program in our parks and not just at certain parks, because of what happens sometimes with the programming, I see it and it's the same parks all over again. But maybe take turns and we could, it it could be a mobile park, one different one every month or something. Um, I don't know, some way so that we could be more um I guess inclusive and make sure that that there is programs for for all our residents and not just certain areas of the city, I guess is my my concern um or in my feedback. I think that's it. Thank you.
Great comments, and I'm just gonna pause here a bit to have our recorder be able to catch up and reiterate some of the key points that you made. You know, sometimes we talk and and plan or speak when uh we're putting together plans and one of the things that you reference, we call nuisance behaviors. How do we design parks and bring in activities to minimize those behaviors that you don't want to see happening in parks? And really the idea is, how do you get people to uh start behaving in a very healthy uh productive way that really respects everyone in the community? And certainly we hear ways to do that through design, through the activities you mentioned. You mentioned youth programs, but you also said family-friendly programs. And even in terms of programs called out movies in the park, for example. So I wanna make sure we're capturing kind of those larger gathering opportunities that you were referencing.
And we can go ahead and move on to word three, Commissioner Way.
Yeah, um, one opportunity um I'm thinking about that involves education and youth programs is um uh camping, um camping events for San Ana youth to just enjoy the outdoors and learn uh more about the lay of the land, the history, but also just the opportunity to um to sustain yourself in 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 the outdoor world. Um, and then another opportunity, I was looking at trails, um making the bike trails a little more connected, um the promotion of of biking to work more often or biking from park to park. Um, and but it's a, it's also a challenge as well, uh because it's, it's, it's tough to make those connections happen. Um, and then, yeah, another big challenge to kind of piggyback off of what Commissioner Gutierrez was saying was the communication aspect when it comes to um uh controversial issues like the handball courts. Um, so yeah, uh finding new uh innovative ways to streamline communication. Thanks.
Great points, and it's already raising that we definitely need to pay attention to who we are hearing from in the community. Uh, making sure that we're hearing broader voices than just those people who typically tend to speak the loudest. We want to hear from the people who don't tend to speak at all or don't show up necessarily at city meetings to make sure that they are heard in this process.
Thank you, and we'll move on to Commissioner uh Tor Blanca from word six.
Hey, so to uh touch on a little bit more, I just really wanted to emphasize some points that my previous commissioner said. Um, regarding safety, I definitely think safety has to be the number one priority. Um, I think you're a hundred percent right wherein we can expect our residents to interact with the park um if they don't feel safe being there. Um, like uh and and this, I I don't know if that could be maybe through having some sort of like um more of a presence on the parks uh just for security reasons. I I know I've seen a few of those um like security codes that make it easier to for in case of emergencies. I've seen a couple of those. I don't know about the efficiency of those uh or uh just maybe a more of a presence, city presence would be beneficial, but definitely safety should be our number one priority because we kind of expect our residents to participate in something that they don't feel safe being around. And uh beyond that also, I I also wanted to emphasize camping. I was lucky enough to be a counselor for the um uh Catalina program that the city had going a few years back, and I really saw the children develop. I saw the campers um opening up through the course of the week. I saw them uh helping others um regardless of age, like we had um a a bunch of teenagers really connecting with like the the eight-year-olds and just um learning from that, you know, like not ev- not every kid has uh an older brother or a sibling to really rely on and building those connections really made those kids grow. Um, and uh as uh Commissioner Muette also touched on, it helps them build their independence. Uh, I saw a lot of kids cook for the first time, saw a lot of kids watch the plate for the first time. Um, and though it was a a little like out of their comfort zone, they they definitely loved it. And a lot of kids were like begging to get back into the kitchen, so I definitely think that um uh budget allowing that camping should be a a a priority that that can happen, that I think it's very doable. Um, and then on top of that, uh I had a commissioner main- mentioned maintenance, how um parks, uh community gardens are a a great idea and I I love that as well. I definitely think community gardens are a great way to get the community involved um and learning. Um, at maintenance-wise, I'd love to, um because I understand that it takes like people being there. I would love to get our uh teenagers involved. I mean, I know uh some schools still require community service hours and that's been kind of like uh wishy-washy with this pandemic and everything. Um, but I think uh definitely teaching uh teenagers or like the the older kids about uh servant leadership in their own communities uh will again open up those opportunities to grow and uh help us continue to invest in uh up and coming leaders. Uh, so I I would love to have maybe some sort of community service liaison with the schools and have a a person that can help or or just make it easier um for a teenager looking for community service hours um to get involved with the parks. Um, I I don't know what we do in that sense already, but I would love to really champion more community service um opportunities within our parks and accessibility to them.
Great, and I'm gonna reiterate a few of those comments again to make sure we get them on the board. Um, you definitely mentioned kind of liaisons to the community liaisons to schools as part of that student leadership opportunities and youth leadership. And one of the things you said early on that really stuck with me is when you talked about summer camps or youth camps, providing them an opportunity to participate in activities for the first time. And I think that for the first time is something we want to capture here because you you said something so well, and that is recreation departments often give kids opportunities that they wouldn't otherwise have. It can teach them, you know, lifelong uh good behaviors around health just by teaching them to play different sports when they're younger that they might not have an opportunity to do. So I think that for the first time is really important. And you certainly emphasized a few different groups, not only younger children, but teens and young adults who need added detention as well. So I want to make sure that we capture that up there, that there are some some age groups that need some attention.
Thank you, and then we'll end with um Vice Chair Ramirez.
Um, majority of my comments are are speaking about something that professor, uh previous uh commissioner spoke about. Um, right here I have um Angie Gomez also spoke about, Commissioner Gomez spoke about um getting a park safe. Um, which also ties with uh also what Commissioner Moet said about um trails, connecting the parks together. I something I've realized when I'm 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 driving around or I'm biking around is some of the smaller parks and parks have a lot of potential for the community, tend to be hidden away from the bigger streets. Uh, I believe, I think there's a Jackson Park or Nexus in Tenia where it's it's uh outside of the street of Fairview. You need to go inside that kind of like the the neighborhood to reach that park. There's other parks in the city that are a little bit more difficult to reach, but if I think a a great idea was is to connect the parks together. Um, limiting uh in getting parks safer is to increase a flow of population going to certain parks. And the best way to do that is to open up the possibility and kind of the audience in which we're trying to seek people to use the parks. Um, for smaller parks that have tend to be more hidden away, it's harder for people from outside to get in. Um, for either people not knowing there's a park there or just having to take too many turns to get in. So probably getting a trail like a bike lane or getting kind of like signs out throughout the sh- the city, promoting there being a park in a certain neighborhood. My encourage individuals to, on a day off, to bike around the city and try to hit a few of the parks, two, three or four, or try to make a a goal for themselves to try to visit all, I believe, forty-eight parks we have in San Ana. Um, not just the bigger ones such as Centennial um or Thornton Park, but actually smarter uh smaller parks, I mean, not wh- which most oftenly would be overlooked. Uh, another point that I do want to highlight as well is what Commissioner Tor Blanca talk about uh spoke about, which was the Catalina trip. Camping are great opportunities for children of Santana to go out. Um, growing up in Santana, I learned a lot of people never really went outside of Santana. They never really learned about uh nature, trees, or anything really that had to do outside of the city. So taking kids to go camping and experiencing a day out in the outside of home, sleeping in tents, and along with um being around other children that are not just in their small little corner Santana, but also being on the opposite side of Santana is a great opportunity to get them together and speak about their similarities and differences being from the same city. Um, along with teaching them about when we went to Catalina, uh because I was also a counselor there and and as a training, uh counselor in training, we took kids out to go hiking. And in those hikes, we had a Herbalist, I believe, is what is, where they, what they are named. And they spoke to them about the plants, what do the plants do, what are the names, what are their traits and what about them makes them unique? Along with um teaching them again, cooking and cleaning, along with teaching them how to play volleyball, teaching them how to play soccer, teaching them how to uh run around and keep them um Along with um teaching them again, cooking and cleaning, along with teaching them how to play volleyball, teaching them how to play soccer, teaching them how to uh run around and keep them um kind of uh busy to run around and active, uh, which is another difficult thing now with technology, getting kids outside of their homes to move around. And the last thing is opportunities. I do want to try to attempt, in if any way possible, highlight the teenagers, middle schoolers, or any children in Santana to express their their talents in arts and music, in any kind of arts, whether it be drawing, music, or dancing, getting a way to get the community to to go to a park and have a concert in a way for children, either whatever, whatever they do. Um, and specifically high schoolers who do music, um, band members uh for high schools. I know um my my high school, Goldinas, had a uh mariachi, so getting a groups of of children who do music to go to parks, a kind of a a tour around Santana to have the the community to get together and um promote and encourage people from their own city and schools and schools from Santana.
Excellent points. Uh, you know, often we we're already hearing some key themes that are emerging and seeing checkmarks appear in several different areas. Um, safety, but the the connections to nature that you're talking about through camping and getting people outdoors uh extremely powerful and important way to engage people across the system. And I love how much you all are talking about the identity of parks and the ability uh for people to express themselves through art, through culture, and to reflect that not only in the activities they're doing, but in the park system uh as well, in the different facilities they have. And certainly, activities are just a really critical way to connect people to the park system and help ensure that it is safe moving forward. Are there any final comments with regards to opportunities or challenges that we?
Um, I I did want to speak one final thought, uh, just from hearing my fellow commissioners speak. And this is just something to put out there. I agree that safety is a huge issue. However, I want to be very careful on how we um encompass the conversation when we talk about enforcing or policing homelessness or secure having a force on homelessness. Um, and I think that it's important to realize that transient communities are also part of our community in Santa Ana. And instead of thinking of it as a problem, finding ways to come up with solutions. I one hundred percent agree that it is not safe to have people doing um illegal drugs in parks, and that is not something that I'm advocating for at all. However, if we are wanting to make our parks safer, we need to think about options for transient communities, thinking about refresh stations, which is something that is part of parks and recreation. Um, I myself, in my youth, I'm thirty years old, but when I was eighteen, I was uh kicked out of my my home, and I was transient for for a little bit. And there were many times where the parks were the only place where I could go and go to the bathroom and wash my hands and just be fresh. So I think that it's important to talk about those um issues as well, instead of when we use words like securing or um having a a a force um to keep, you know, to sequester communities or keep those communities away. Um, I think we should instead look at trying to find options, and this is an opportunity to look at um work with other commissions with the Housing and Planning Commission. Orange County has a huge um homeless issue that needs to be addressed, and we have a commission that is supposed to be helping with that. But that's an opportunity to look at with some building some bridges and some intercommunication between commissions. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there that I agree, safety is a huge concern, and we want the parks to be safe for families to come, and we want people to come in, but we also shouldn't look at it as a nuisance problem or, you know, the homeless problem. We should look at solutions to help those communities as well.
Thank you, Chairman Gutierrez. You said that so well, and I really appreciate you sharing your own personal story because you certainly speak from a place of power around this. In other words, uh, parks are public spaces, and the public includes people who don't have housing, includes people of different ages, different demographic, different challenges in life, different abilities. And we certainly want to look at this from the equity standpoint of how do we make sure that we connect all of those people to the benefits associated with uh parks and recreation activities. Uh, many parks departments across the nation are exploring ways to provide services to homeless people who are in their parks as well as other people who are in their parks. And it's a a funding challenge to some extent, but a real opportunity to look at the different needs of the community. And maybe that is a good segue to that final question with regards to the most pressing needs. Um, one of the things that we want to acknowledge here is that the the needs may be uh around larger community issues or city issues that go beyond parks and recreation, but are see themselves in parks. But they also may be uh you helping us identify who are the groups most in need of key services. Uh, you know, who are the people who are left out of the conversation around parks and recreation, but also around the services that we want to provide? So that's my final question to you. What are those most pressing needs and who do we need to serve?
Thank you. I think it's been echoed, the youth is definitely one of the communities that we need to look at. Um, and then Commissioner, I believe it was Commissioner Gomez who spoke on it, but we should really work on addressing which which communities within Santa Ana have more of a pressing issues. Um, she did mention that some parks are given more attention than other parks, and this may go with what um Vice Chair said, where the smaller parks, so maybe the smaller park communities are communities that we need to look at and address. Um, our transient communities, yes, those need to be added in there as well. Um, but I think that the youth is I would say it was one, it's one of my top priorities to really work on engaging the youth and making sure that they're coming to the parks because they're they're going to be the stewards of our parks once they reach of age as well. And we'll go ahead and we'll turn it to uh Ward two, which is Commissioner Gomez.
Thank you. Um, so I'm gonna be a little bit more specific, and and instead of youth, because I feel the city does a good job with the younger kids. I feel our teenagers are getting left out. Honestly, I think we need to empower these leaders. Santana youth have amazing youth, like how many have been admitted to Harvard already this year? Um, and I just feel that we as a city are failing to really connect with our our teenagers. We have a lot of nonprofits stepping up and helping, and I think that's beautiful, right? But as a city, we're giving most of our money to policing and expecting them to somehow help. We're placing officers in schools, which I don't agree with. Um, and I feel like th- there needs to be something that we're doing for our teens. More than, I I love the library has a teen space, and I love that, and I I know, um, I think we tried to, correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, but did wasn't there like a teen room sorts at the Roosevelt Walker Center and just getting them engaged and and having them really be not only part of the process, but part of programming. These kids are are soon to be adults, and I don't feel we as a city have invested in our teens. And it it breaks my heart because they really just need the connection, and I somebody said it best as far as community service. When a child does community service, they feel like they're part of that, uh, a little bit more connection, I think, with the city. And they can have honor and pride of being part of Santana. So definitely, I think, team programs, um, just to be a little bit more specifics. Um, and and to clarify for Commissioner Gutierrez, the homeless is not a nuisance, but it is a safety concern to me when they're they're like going to the restroom, pulling down their pants in front of my kids or doing drugs in front of them, but I agree with you a thousand percent. I don't think we need to criminalize or any kind of groups that I really think, uh, I love your your story and your feedback. I think it's really important that we don't, like you said, consider them an inconvenience. So I just want to make sure that, like, they're not an inconvenience, or they're not a um an issue. It's just sometimes, and I I get it, because there's a lot of times mental health involved, that they don't even have power or control over that, but it does make it fam- intimidating for families to then attend the park. So how can we work collaboratively? And how can we, we come up with a solution that's kind of good for everybody, right? Not just like, okay, families and move away transients, because I think Cindy mentioned it, parks are for everybody, parks are public spaces, so. But I really love hearing your story. Thank you, Gabriel, for for Gabriela for sharing. Or Ms. Gutierrez, sorry, Gabriel. I'll just say Commissioner Gutierrez, there we go. Um, so my most pressing needs, I would definitely think youth programs. I would love to see, and I don't know if we've ever talked about it, to study like the most, um, I don't know how you would call these, uh, I don't like using at-risk neighborhoods. There's a word for it. I remember when we did a grant for MPNA, and I can't remember what it was, but it was like high high crime over densely populated areas. I think if if we could identify first of all in the city what those areas are, and then in the nearest park, provide like a resource center. To me, not saying that's gonna solve everything, but if that resource centers has mental health, has social emotional support for our young people, have youth programs, have um community needs, we have to meet them where they're at, right? And again, it can't just be over at Delhi that they have everything, or it can be just over other places that I feel if we were distributed a little bit better and be intentional of where it's going, I think that would that would help. I don't know. I speak fast and I talk a lot when when I have a lot of things to say, so I apologize if I went too fast. But I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Not too fast at all. I think this is great, and I love how invested you all are uh in this master planning process and in making your park system better. I think these are all uh critically important comments, so thank you.
Thank you. And before we go to to Commissioner Moi, I just want to clarify as well. I I don't, I didn't take any of the words as an attack. It was just a reminder to be careful on the language that we use when we're talking about these issues, because yes, we are very impassioned, and we all want the parks to be great. But we have to be careful with the language that we use, so it doesn't unintentionally influence our decisions. But I thank you for all the kind words that everyone has said so far, but please, no, it's not. Um, it wasn't a coming from a like a place of, oh, I think you're attacking it. So thank you for that. And with that, we'll move to Commissioner Moi.
Yeah, um, I wanted to reiterate what Commissioner Gomez said about mental health. That was one of the first needs that came up uh when when you brought up the question. Um, you know, like, when it comes to mental health, like, we're all kind of figuring it out as we go along, but uh we can look at research that that involves the connection between nature and um and mental health, and there are uh like programs like meditation and yoga and gardening that can just really help, uh, and events that are that are that have that priority in mind, I think will help create more um spaces and opportunities for people to see like, oh, the city is giving me this opportunity to um to focus on my mental health and prioritize it, and it's it is uh an issue. Um, so yeah, that, um, local businesses and involving them i- in ways, um, not sure if I have too much to speak about that, but local businesses, I don't know. Um, and then arts and artists, um, as Commissioner Ramirez was talking about, um, that's that's definitely a a need for people of all ages in Santa Ana, and Santa Ana is um so vibrant as it is, you know, we can, we can show a lot of that. Yeah.
I love all the conversations around mental health. You know, research shows how important parks are to uh supporting relaxation and quality of life and all of those things that really uh support people's mental health. So it's not just about physical activity, but the the mental and even uh kind of enlivening the spirit that happens when you are outdoors in parks that are important.
Thank you. And with that, we'll go to Commissioner Tor Blanca, Ward six.
All right, yeah, so I just wanted to reemphasize um community service. I mean, y'all, y'all really said it best, of community service. Um, I really want to see um uh teenagers, someone else mentioned as well, another commissioner mentioned, uh, how teenagers really need this space to to grow and to to keep being leaders in our communities in our communities. Um, just a a little about me, like, I went from having a total of ten community service hours my freshman year to having like over five hundred in the pre- in the next three years, and that really impacted me in in such an amazing way. I wanted nothing really to do with the city my freshman year, and then after that, I I fell in love with the community, and I really saw um the impact that all the um the the toy giveaways and food giveaways and um uh movies at the parks and uh just seeing the community interact with itself. Uh, almost as for the first time, I was really blown away because um I mean, they're they're neighbors, you know, these communities are neighbors. They live right next to each other, and so uh the fact that they're able to to have this place um to be together really emphasizes this place of community, and I've seen relationships grow where people, neighbors, didn't know each other whatsoever, but they went to a movie in the park together, they just happened to sit next to each other, and then they um they continue to speak uh uh like to each other. I think really building that sense of community is really great. Um, uh, again, a a lot of these points were just touched on. Another thing I really wanted to emphasize, just because I haven't heard the the word yet, is um play. I really think that um, the world is very fast paced nowadays, and uh maybe uh kids are a little bit in a rush to like, oh, like the um, a little bit in a rush to grow up. The ones that aren't teenagers want to be teenage, the ones that are teenagers want to be adults. And I I really want to bring back the sense of play um to the the children of Santa Ana and them be able to uh let go, have a place where they can let go of these um expectations that they put on themselves and are able to run around. Um, because that uh allows you to um just let your guard down and uh then continue with your day after that. Uh, and I think that ties back into mental health, well, where um, if we can show these kids to really take some time to themselves. I know a lot of teenagers, I have a brother that's a senior in high school, and he was like super stressed um because of school, a lot of them feel overworked, a lot of them really feel overworked, and I think providing a space um through community service where it doesn't feel like a burden would be great for them. Um, and providing this place for them to be able to play would be great for them. Um, because so we can help alleviate some of that stress and let them know that, hey, yes, the world is up and coming, and the world is coming at you fast, but you still have time, just relax, take it easy. And like they said, through things like meditation, through things like uh yoga, which I think we can provide. Um, I I would really love to see that integrated uh heavily uh into the the parks fund.
Great comments. We're still getting them up there. It's the whole notion of play. Uh, you kind of simplified things down to his essence. Uh, play not only supports the mental health and youth development, which has been two key things that we've heard a lot about here, but just the opportunity for people to relax and enjoy and kind of get away from the stress that of course, we've all felt in the last year, uh, but even beyond that. So uh critically important to have those opportunities. I'm glad you threw that word in there.
Thank you, and then we'll go to Vice Chair Ramirez.
Yeah, I think the most, uh, a lot of things I say are gonna be like um highlighting things that previous commissioners have said. Um, another one is uh the teen uh programs. I I do believe getting teenagers to get it um uh active inside the community of the parks that they go to is a definitely uh definitely a positive thing for the community. Um, because a lot of teenagers now are either children to busy parents who don't have time to be at home because they're out working as many jobs or working as many hours needed to provide for their family. So a lot of the time, teenagers tend to be the second guardians or second parents of the kids that are at home. So I do want to try to have um a focus on teenagers being uh kind of attracted to parks so that they can bring their younger siblings to go to the park and enjoy it with them. Um, I do want to focus and highlight on giving high schoolers a ability and an opportunity to go to parks and showcase things that they do to enjoy themselves. Um, whether it be choir individuals who enjoy singing and want to go out into a park and do a a singing show, a showcase of the community. A best way to make a community proud of themselves and and showcase it is to have the the younger generation go out and showcase things that they do for fun. Um, it can be any kind of showcase. It's kind of saying, try to do a a a showcase of the youth of Santana at different parks, not just at Centennial, not just at Madison, not at Thornton, but at any park that's possible, where you have kids who play guitar at home, and they can go out to the park and play guitar so that the community can be like, hey, we have people here who are not just academically talented, but also artistically talented. Um, and giving that huge opportunity and also trying to emphasize the idea of a a space to relax and enjoy. When you give um When you give, um. Children and the younger generation teenagers as an opportunity to showcase what they do for fun. It allows them to feel as if though the thing they do as their recreation is more than just a small thing on the side. It's something that they can take and, and feel proud of themselves for taking time out of their own schedule, busy schedule of studying, homework. And everything else to go to higher university or to whatever plans they have in the future. So I do wanna emphasize on the idea of focusing on the teenage community. Because they, in a way, we attract them to parks, we attract the younger generation. Because their younger siblings, their younger sisters, whoever they have in their own family circle might come with them. To go see what's going on at the park around their neighborhood or around the city of Santana.
Excellent, excellent comments, uh, all the way around. And I like how you're certainly echoing certain key themes that are already emerging. But before I talk about the themes that we see emerging from this conversation, now that you've heard all the other comments, is there any other need that we should add up here? Or any place on the map that we should highlight that definitely needs some added attention?
Hello, everybody. Actually, I, 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 uh, unfortunately, my, my afternoon unraveled and I got here a bit late, so. If, uh, if it'd be possible to maybe give me a quick recap of where we're at and, and, um, I see I can, I've been reading the, uh, the, uh. Other comments and stuff. So what's the primary focus of what we're trying to accomplish here?
Certainly, we had a, a conversation around some of the key opportunities and needs for the plan to address. And here we're talking about. Not only needs across the system, but also what are the key groups, whether they're demographic groups or different social groups, stakeholders. Who need better park and recreation services.
Okay, I, I would like to add a little bit because I see a lot about teen and, and youth and, and, and using the parks, uh, as effectively as possible. I, I have a background or have spent some quite a bit of time in the youth, uh, sports realm of, of the city of Santa Ana. You know, a lot of what we're talking about as far as, uh, you know, the sports is concerned. If the younger kids are playing sports, a lot of times their older siblings will join in, in some facet or another, whether it's. Volunteering, whether it's, uh, being an umpire or a ref or, or, um. Of that. So I think if we have, you know, we're able to, to build strong, uh. Competent, um, uh, youth sports programs that we will, we will be able to. Create a sense of community that will be, uh, beneficial for not only the, the young kids, but all the way through, through high school. We've, in past, there's been lots of volunteers that would, uh. Community service hours and stuff that would be spent helping clean up parks or, or helping maintain, um, uh. The needs that are, you know, for any specific sports program. So, um. And, and you know, I, I think those are some things that we could look at as well, but, uh. Just my two quick cents there.
Great comments. Thank you for, for being able to be here and to add those in. I appreciate it. Are there any final comments from others now that you, you've heard the discussion? We've kind of finished our last question, but before I do some wrap up remarks. Is there anything that you felt, uh, hasn't been said yet that we need to add to this?
I wanna, oh, oh, go ahead.
Um, social media, um. I just wanted to say that, um. It's a, it's a really good opportunity to, um, be creative and promote. Anything that's going on when it comes to parks and recreation and, uh. Yeah, it can always, it can always be improved upon, you know, and, uh, it's hard because social media is not necessarily. The most positive thing for mental health, but it's, it's also a way to, you know. Bring people in and, uh, and invite people to events and opportunities.
Great point. So we're not only thinking about what we're providing, but how we let people know what's available to them. This one comments we hear frequently about people just don't know what parks and recreation opportunities are available. So I love that you're calling attention to that.
I wanted to add, I think this, um, this community does need to be addressed and may be the most pressing need. We really wanna look at the Vietnamese and Asian community that lives in Santana. Um, a lot of the commissioners spoke about. Making sure that the parks are representation of Santa Ana and of its residents. And, um, that is something that is lacking. In our city is the Asian representation that we have. So making sure that we do hear from those communities. Um, and then I'm not sure if there's this, if there's a place on the, the board of what we've been talking about, but, um, these are just some. Like maybe solutions, uh, to some of the problems that were addressed or some of the issues that were addressed. Um, I know that we talked about making sure. That we get the survey out. So maybe the library can designate some times where the computers will be made available. Maybe we could have. Options about that. We could use the advisory board to make sure that that gets out to the community from the hours of. This time and this time on these days, we're gonna have the community libraries open and the computers will have access or paper surveys. A lot of them talked about with the youth and in bringing up the community gardens and the cooking classes. We could, if we had some community gardens, we could absolutely use the plants and the herbs and all of that. To have those cooking classes, that would be something to help, um, lower the costs of putting on those classes. And then I really loved what a lot of the commissioners said with, um, recreation, yoga, mental health. I'm a yoga instructor and I know that they're. In order to get your yoga certification, you have to do a certain amount of hours. And we can definitely access the local businesses that are not just in Santa Ana, but also in Orange County. I definitely know that if I went to the yoga studio that I got my certification and said, hey, does anyone wanna do a donation class? Or does anyone wanna do a free class in the park? You'll get your hours to get your certification. So those are some ways to. Since we're talking about budgeting, because that is one of the biggest issues. When we have so many ideas and we all want them to be implemented, making sure that the budget stays manageable. So, um, those are just some kind of ideas that I had of making sure that the costs don't get too high so that we can't implement all of those programs. But yeah, that's all that I have to say.
Great. And I, I wanna make sure we capture what you just said there at the end about costs as well. Making things that are affordable to everyone, making sure costs don't get too high, but at the same time recognizing that. For programs, we do need to have some sort of cost recovery in order to be able to afford to provide programs and services across the community. Any other final thoughts that we should add or other groups to call attention to? All right. So what I wanna do is, uh, wrap up by identifying some of the key themes that we've heard emerge through here. Certainly comments around safety, but clarifying that safety is also about kind of the comfort. In, in wellbeing of all users in the park system. So making sure that we're not criminalizing one group or any group is really about making all welcome and comfortable in the parks. And then connecting, uh, via trails and connecting parks together, that park access piece definitely was important. Certainly, we heard time and time again about, uh, what I refer to as kind of youth and teen leadership and development. But not only their programs, but also empowering them in a way that, uh, builds skills and makes them successful in life. Certainly, the education piece came up multiple times in terms of looking for skill development and educational opportunities for youth. Looking at mental health as well, making sure we're distributing resources across the system. I think I would even broaden that a little bit in terms of the, the discussion around equity in general. Making sure that it's not just resources across the system and its distribution, but making sure that, uh, all people have. Opportunities to connect to the benefits of the park system. Certain there was conversations around a variety of different activities and programs. You all emphasized time and time again how important those activities are to connect people. Not only to parks, but to one another, to the community, to the city. Then having those spaces to relax, to play, um, uh, green spaces in particular. I would even add one around connections to nature. We heard about, you know, the camping programs, for example, or. The need to be outdoors, uh, the importance of shade, uh, the importance of. Just, uh, the kind of the environmental aspects and creating the stewards of the future who are gonna help take care of that open space for us moving forward. And another one that I wrote down here on my own notes is more around those kind of social connections and community identity. Certainly, we heard the emphasis around how do we make our park system reflect, uh, the. Through arts, through culture, through entertainment, through the activities and facilities we provide. The unique needs of this community, uh, whether we're talking about Hispanic and Latino residents or Asian and Vietnamese residents or. Uh, all, all people across the city. And then finally, maybe one more word to throw up, uh, there would be around volunteerism. Certainly, strong comments around just the, the connections that were made by either people being camp counselors. Or, uh, just volunteering through school programs or other youth programs for the park system. And making sure we capitalize on that. Do we miss anything that are kind of the key connections that we heard from you all today? This has been a fabulous conversation. Your insights are most appreciated.
You, the, the volunteerism, I, I'd like to, you know, I think that's kind of the basis of, uh, where you start, uh, getting a sense of. Of, of pride in your community is when, when, when you start volunteering. You know, being a volunteer in, in, in our, uh, youth sports programs for the last 10 plus years. It, I, I've learned so much as a, as a person, as a, as a, as a parent, um, from being a volunteer. So. And, and my kids understand what it, what that means for them going forward, right? So. If you, if you create this on the front side. It, it can almost take care of itself. It's not something necessarily the city has to actually facilitate. It can be done through programs that are, that are. Uh, partnered with the city, right? And the, the, you know, as long as we as a city maintain and, and make sure that all, everything's being done in accordance to. You know, the, the, the basic requirements, but it's, um. Uh, in, in, in safe and, and, and insurance and all the proper ways that it needs to be done. But I think that's really how you, you, you volunteerism is the, is the, is, is the foundation of, of creating a, a community that's really strong and, and, and healthy. From, from the youth, from the children all the way to, to, to adults. So that's.
Indeed, very well said. And you all have really helped us create and craft. Not only key directions for the planning process, but helped us understand what the vision for the park system should be over the next 10 years. So I greatly appreciate all of these insights.
Thank you so much, Cindy, and thank you, uh, to the commissioners. Um, this is very exciting to me, uh, you guys. I'm so excited to work with all of you. I'm glad that you're on this commission. I think all of you are outstanding and, um. This is an important time in parks and recreation and in this city because you all, we all can make an incredible, incredible difference. And I know the pandemic was horrible, but it's actually turned out to help us, uh, parks and recreation. We have. You know, some federal funding we may be able to get to improve our park system. We have a city council that's. Uh, supportive of, of parks and recreation. So this is a really great time. I'm so happy we're going through this process right now. I'm glad that you are involved and Cindy, I thank you so much for, um, your presentation and engaging the. Uh, commission, uh, that was outstanding. And, um, I know that she's, uh, she's made some other presentations and we'll get around. In the city and try to engage as many people as we can. Can I just ask you one thing, Cindy? How many people at this point have like returned surveys? Because you were kind of at the com link meeting, you said that you were. Uh, impressed about the number of surveys that were returned and maybe speak about that.
I, I don't have the most recent numbers. I do know that in the first week, we had approximately 480 people. And just, just in the first week of launching, which is huge because not all the information had been posted. We don't have flyers out yet. So. We really expect strong numbers from this, but also really appreciate your help in making sure that we have, uh. Representation from, uh, across the, the city. And in fact, the recent update that I'm getting right now is 764. Responses currently, so.
Uh, you know, you may think it, it's, you know, 764 for a population of, you know, over to 350,000, but that is really good. The, the feedback. And because you, you, you think about when you go to these community meetings, public input, you maybe get five, 10, 15 people at the most. And so actually we're allowing people to chime in wherever they are, uh, in whatever language they speak and, and so, so that's great. So thank you very much, Cindy. I appreciate it.
Of course. And then thank you to the commissioners. Uh, you guys, this has been great feedback. So I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. And I know that on the agenda, it says that we're gonna have the, um, staff informational reports, but due to the time. Spent on the presentation, we're going to be skipping that for, uh, this meeting.
Yeah, no, no problem. We wanna be respectful of your time. So, uh, the, when we get to that point in the agenda, the informational reports, if you have any questions, please feel. Free to ask the staff, uh, but, uh, we'll let you go ahead and continue, um, chairperson with, with the meeting.
Thank you. And I believe that we are, um, at the consent calendar, correct? Is that where we're, are we skipping?
I believe we are, uh, public comments. If there's any public comments.
Thank you. So if there are any public comments at this time, recording secretary, does anyone wish to speak?
Thank you, Chairperson. There are no public comments at this time.
Thank you very much. And then next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Um, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Chairperson, before you guys do, uh, approve that, there is one excuse absence that is Commissioner Wu.
Thank you very much. Does anyone move to approve the consent calendar?
I move Cory.
Commissioner Cory, does anyone second?
I can second. Commissioner Gomez.
Thank you, Commissioner Gomez. And then recording secretary, if you could call though. Yes.
Commissioner Tor Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Muwet?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gomez?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And since we are skipping the informational items, the next agenda is the commissioner comments. Um, this is a time for each commissioner to provide comments if you wish, but it is not required. I will.
Oh, yes. Sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Um, we, we have two business items. So if we can go over those two business items and the first one is the. Proposed Parks and Recreation Commission bylaw amendments. Is that okay to go over that?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much. Um, in 1998, I believe the bylaws, uh, were, uh, changed. Or amended, uh, for the, for the, actually the Board of Recreation and Parks. Um, in August and September of 2020, the city council, um, made some changes to the municipal code. And once I'll go over here in a few minutes. And the main ones for parks and recreation is really just changing the name and some other things, items that we'll go through. So it went from the Board of Recreation and Parks to the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission. Um, and so we need to amend the bylaws. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about the process we'll take. Uh, and wanted to get your input and feedback on this. So we'll have you review, um, the proposed bylaws tonight. Um, and then I'll take your, um. Suggestions to the city attorney. Um, I'll have her, um, review the bylaws and then I'll bring them back to you. Uh, and then you'll officially adopt them and then we'll move them on to, um, or actually. You'll recommend the city council adopts them and then we'll go to the city council and they will adopt the, the bylaws. So if you, uh, let's see, I'm trying to go to the page, the proposed bylaws. In your agenda packet, um, and I'll quickly go over these. Uh, number 1.0 is the name. Again, we changed the name of the commission to more appro- appropriately reflect, um, the Parks and Recreation Agency. Um, our location is at City Hall, uh, at 20 Civic Center Plaza. 3.0 talks about when the commission was established and the Santa Ana municipal code. articles that talk about what the commission does, which is actually 4.0, the responsibilities and duties of the commission. So the duties of this commission are to act in advisory capacity to the city council and matters pertaining to acquisition capital improvements, rehabilitation and maintenance of parks and recreation and cultural zoo and facilities. And then also we have 4.2 through 4.6. I won't read them all. In 5.0, it talks about the membership. 5.1 talks about vacancies. 5.2 talks about the removal of commissioners. 5.3 talks about the term of commissioners. 6.0 talks about the compensation. 7.0 talks about the officers, the election, the chair and the vice chair. And 8.0 talks about the meetings. And in, in the one section here, let me see here, section 8.4 talks about regular meetings. And so it says that the commission shall meet on the fourth Friday of the month. And this is where I need your feedback as to where you want to, if you want to keep the fourth Friday. I'm sorry, that's not right. Okay. We want to know when you want to meet and what time you want to meet. So, well, you don't need to decide that today, but when I come back, we can add that into the bylaws as to the date and time that you want to meet. And recorded secretary Sandoval will provide some options that you can choose from. I know that everybody is busy. You have jobs, you have things that you have families that you have to do. And so we want to make it as convenient as possible for you. So be thinking about that and then bring that back. We'll bring that back next time for you to decide. It also talks about special meetings and virtual meetings. And the very last thing is the bylaws have to be approved by the city council. So that is essentially it. The youth commission is updating their bylaws and it's essentially the same thing. It's related to the municipal code changes that the city council made. But I'd like to take any feedback that you have regarding the bylaws at this point. And if there's none, then I'll take them and bring them to the city attorney and bring them back to you next meeting. Thank you. That's the end of my presentations. I'd be happy to answer questions or at this time.
Do any of the commissioners have questions? All right. And then I believe the last item on the business calendar is to review and discuss the removal process for park amenities. And then I will turn it over to, oh, is that not happening?
Or? Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay.
If we can, if we can just do that real quick, I'll go ahead and take this one over and then Ron O'Neal can help answer questions. So at the last meeting, the commission asked, you know, the discussion was about the removal of park amenities. And it was in light of the removal of the handball courts. And so our past practice, there's really nothing, there's no policy on this for removing our park amenities from parks includes, you know, the community or staff makes a request for removal of the amenity. Staff analyzes the request and discusses with the neighborhood associations or prepares a survey to notify the community in the immediate area. Sometimes the neighborhood associations will write a letter of support for a specific amenity to be removed or added. The neighborhood association or survey agrees or disagrees with the removal. A report is prepared and presented to the commission for discussion. And this would be, this is where the community can also chime in. And then if the commission agrees with the proposed removal, the amenity is removed. So it hasn't been an exact science. There's been different things that have happened throughout the years. So we're looking for your, you know, I have a professional opinion on, on how things should happen. And I believe, you know, community input should be part of it. And that's why bringing things to the commission is a, is a space and a place for people to chime in. But interested in your comments. So that's the end of the presentation. If you can provide comments, that would be great.
And do any commissioners have comments on this?
Yeah, um, I think it would be helpful to everyone to maybe define what an amenity would be, maybe like put a dollar value on it. Or like assessing if it has community value. That's, that was a, that was an issue with, with the handball courts. And then, and then that could lead to a community outreach as a result of assessing whether or not it has a particular value. Maybe like, as far as outreach goes, maybe also like including like a meeting that both neighborhood associations and community members are invited to. So that they maybe get a presentation on what the removal process will be and maybe why that's happening. And the report, I'm wondering if it's also been shown to, like reports like this have been shown to city council as well.
Yeah, I, I've not been here long, but maybe Ron can answer that question. But I think it looks like the commission, the reports only prepared for the commission unless maybe the council, city council asked for a report on something specific. In another city I was at, we had to make sure that we went to the commission and then go to the city council on certain things. So maybe under this, under things that included parks, they trusted the commission to make those decisions and it didn't move forward. I don't know. I'm just guessing. But Ron, if you want to chime in about the past process?
Yeah, you're correct. Normally, the item that's being requested to be removed just mainly goes to the commission. I don't remember all my years here that we've taken any item to the city council concerning removal. We've taken concept plans to the city council when we're building new parks. But on, on removal of certain items, small items, or we've never taken it, the commission actually decided if it should be removed or not removed based on the information provided. Now, your question on dollar value, it's an interesting question because we remove items that we feel is insignificant. Such as a dead tree or a number of trees or, or things like that, that that we, that needs to be removed because of safety reasons that we just automatically remove. But we don't take it to the commission. We may provide a report sometime later that we've removed X number of dead trees in a park. But not every tree is taken to the commission requesting a removal. But I don't remember us, there, there have been situations where a bike trail has been closed and we had to go to a neighborhood and ask for a survey. We did a survey and it was 49% to keep it, 51% to close it. And so bike trails were closed in certain sections. You know, this particular handball court issue, we did a survey, not this recent one, but some time ago, several, several years ago. It was a survey done on removal of that handball court and it was the same situation. 49% wanted it kept and 51% wanted it, I'm sorry, reverse. 51% wanted it kept, 49% wanted it removed. So it was kept. So, you know, but those are the key ones that I, I remember that happened throughout the years.
Okay, thank you, Ron. I think what, I'm sorry, we'll let the other commissioners comment.
I wanted to clarify, and this could be something that we could add. When it says the community or staff makes requests for removal of park amenities, what is the community, is it, is it a certain amount of signatures? Is it a certain amount? I mean, when you say the community makes a request. And I also wanted clarification too, because the handball courts were removed. They, correct? They were removed. And now the community is asking to be, for them to be put back up because they were removed without the consent of the community in a, in a way. So obviously, the way that it should have happened in theory didn't happen. So I do think that's the biggest thing. When you put the community or staff makes requests for removal, having clear, concise guidelines for what constitutes as the community, the certain guidelines that need to be there. So before it even gets to the commission. If three people come and say that they want the handball court removed, that can't mean the community. And then it gets put forth and then now the handball courts are gone. So.
You're absolutely correct. And, and what, what we've done in the past, I'll give you a couple of situations where a single member would request a item be removed. We asked that that item be taken to the neighborhood association for discussion and approval. And once we get the approval of the association, either to remove or to leave it. Let's say the neighborhood association says to leave it, then that's the end of the discussion. We just leave it. But if the neighborhood association said, you know, we want it removed, then we write a report on why it should be done. And it should go before this commission to agree or disagree whether they should be removed or not. And another big item that was causing a lot of controversy was the San Point Paseo, where the trees were causing the problem. And, and one or two residents wanted the trees removed. And it, we took it before some groups and, and, and we said, no, no, we want to keep the trees. But finally, because of liability issues, all the trees were removed. So there's different circumstances that may come up that require things to be removed.
I think to the point of both commissioners' comments that there needs to be something that when I'm not here and when Ron's not here and when you're not here, what is the process for these type of things and how do we get the community engaged? So there, there can be an internal policy that we go by. And so, and we can certainly put that together. So there are times when maybe there are grants that we receive to develop a park and some amenities may be gone. But still, the community is going to be involved because there's always going to be public input in that process. So to prevent what happened at the, to help prevent what happened at the handball court, we could put something together that will clearly describe to the community what we do. Kind of like when we remove trees, we have the authority to remove a tree immediately if it's a safety issue. So kind of like what are the parameters of those things and, and put it out there. The community should know that and they should know that they have opportunities to chime in about things because we want to hear their opinion. So we'll put something like that together and then we'll have, we'll bring it back at some point to the commission and, and go from there, if, if that's agreeable to everyone.
Yeah, I was, I totally agree that sort of internal policy with guidelines would be helpful for everyone to kind of understand, you know, how the process works.
Absolutely. Great.
Are there any other commissioners who would like to comment or have questions?
Yeah, I just, just to kind of a comment here, but, you know, I feel when we're dealing with certain decisions like this, that sometimes the, the community sometimes doesn't realize what that effect will have until it's gone, right? And, and then people start speaking up, right? So I don't know how we kind of get the, the, a broader, broader scope of who's kind of involved in that. You know, a lot of times, you know, like most things, you usually have a few people that are really involved in the, in, in any neighborhood association, right? You got a handful of people that are really kind of driving, making sure that everything's kind of working. But rest of everybody else is working and going to school or whatever else. And they may not realize, hey, all of a sudden something's gone in their community and wait, wait. And that's when you have an upheaval. So I don't know how we can really, you know, I'm sure you're never going to get rid of all the people that are, are going to kind of, I guess, lack of a better term, kind of not aware of what's going on around them until it's gone. But, you know, what we're doing now, I think sometimes leaves, leaves some open ended, like, you know, there's, there's a bit of a, a concern after the fact, right? So how do you, how do you get them to, to be part of that, you know, kind of the stakeholder in that early on?
Right, absolutely. Well, I think by, those are good comments. By putting something together and letting the community know, you know, like our activity guide. I want to create some pages on about our park system. And this could be one of the things about our park system. We talk about park amenities and during the Parks Master Plan process, they're going to be evaluating all of our amenities as to what the age is, how good they are. Do they need to be replaced, repaired, things of that nature? But what we can do in our activity guide is talk about tree care and when we remove a tree and how we do that and how we decide that. We can talk about amenities in parks. And so I think that we can do the best we can and do diligence. And if we know as professionals that something's going to be, you know, an issue with, with the community, we need to give it a little more time to marinate out there and let people kind of chime in. And so nothing's perfect, but you can continue to, to operate in a way where you're trying to be transparent. And you let the community chime in and do what's best for the community.
I'm also wondering if there is, sorry. Okay. I'm also wondering if there's a status report on the Santa Anita surveys.
Yeah, those are due tomorrow. So the, the, and so at the next meeting, we'll have that for you.
Thank you.
And I, I wanted to say, so I appreciate what, what Ron O'Neal, what you said, where typically it goes before the neighborhood association. And then the neighborhood association decides whether to bring it to the commission. When I talk about concrete, I mean, you know, typically like within HOA associations, you need to have a certain percentage. So if we put on there, you need to have 50 signatures. They need to be in that ward that that amenity is being talked about. And this is not to go to the neighborhood association. This is if the neighborhood association says, oh yeah, this is a problem. You need to get 50 signatures from community members. They need to be of that ward. So it can't be, you know, somebody who's in Ward 6, they're talking about removing something that's in Ward 1. No, you need to have 50 signatures. They need to be from that ward. And if you get the 50 signatures, then it will go to the commission. Because I think that that is one of the biggest issues that happened with the handball courts is it was a group of people, a small group of people who claimed to speak for the community. And because there was no concrete way of saying what the community was, the handball courts got removed and then the community was up at arms and in rally. So I think that having a specific number, and that's something that can be discussed of what that specific number is. But I think if like 50 or 60 people have enough attention and care enough to put their signature on something. So, you know, keeping a number like that, that can be something to be discussed. So that that way we don't get things where it's just a handful of people.
Right, right, absolutely. One person can come to this commission and say, we want something removed. And then what would you tell them? And so, you know, it's, the, the Park and Rec Commission should be the people, it, the neighborhood associations, there's, what is there, 62 of them? Some are active, some are not active. But I think it should be the commission is where people go to, to request things. And so, you know, and maybe the commission says, instead of the signature thing, we say, okay, well then, within 1,000 feet of that particular park, let's send out a survey to the, to the people who live 1,000 feet or 500 feet from the park and find out what they say and something of that nature. So we'll come up with something to make it equitable and fair for everybody and that the community understands.
My only concern with putting a distance on it is that, you know, like most parks in the neighborhood, they're, 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 everybody's going to use them, right? So maybe within that neighborhood association or the affected area, you know, so a little further than 500 or 1,000 feet, because that's not, that's not really getting a scope of everybody that's within that parked facility, right? So maybe broaden it a little bit further than that, but you know, maybe not to a complete ward, but maybe to a, to a neighborhood association area where we're within a, you know, half, just one square mile or something like that.
Yeah, and, and we, good. Yeah, and, and we, good comments, we have done that, like one thousand square feet, one thousand feet from Santanita Park. We wanted to make sure, the city council wanted to make sure, what do the people around that park want as far as that handball court? But there is a cost to that, and so if you go farther and farther and farther. It's, you know, it, it could be cost prohibitive or, but maybe there's other things that we could, we could look at. As far as getting it out to the community besides mailing a piece of, you know, paper. Maybe there's other ways we can get it to them a lot less expensive.
That's what I suggested, signatures or something of that nature, because it puts the pressure on. The neighborhood association or the community, instead of spending. City resources on sending out a survey to see if there's any interest before it even comes to the commission. If you want to have an issue addressed, having it in our, in our bylaws or on the website of. If there's something that you wish to be removed, the steps are gain. Fifty signatures, those signatures must be of that ward, they must be legible, they must be. And that's just something that I've seen from, like I said, with HOA bylaws. There's kind of a step-by-step process of, before it even gets to the HOA. You know, you need to have a certain amount of signatures to, to show that there's an actual concern for the issue. So yeah, I think that there's a good discussion of how we can mitigate, making sure that we're not spending city resources on something that might not be a concern. Before it even gets to the commission.
Got it, thank you.
Are there any final comments? Perfect, and I think now this takes us to the commission, the last commissioner comments. And I, I do thank everyone for the grace of, with the script, I'm still getting used to it, so thank you for that. But this is the time for each commissioner to provide comments if you wish, but it's not required. I'll call upon each commissioner individually stating, starting with Commissioner Ramirez, and then we'll go in order. So Commissioner Ramirez, do you have any comments at this time?
Yeah, with the whole plan for the park master plan. I enjoy hearing everybody's perspective on ideas and what priorities we all have individually on the community. And I do want to encourage trying to go out and. Fast-tracking some of these programs that we have in mind. Not just wait for the master plan to kick in after a few months or years or however long it takes, but rather try to fast-track them. Smaller, more important programs that we all have in mind to encourage each other to try to make, build these programs in the community. In a way, programs that we each prioritize. Find a way to, to bring them to the community now rather than later. To find that way to have the community benefit from the activities and programs that we all want to give back to our own community. And put them now rather than later. Because it was great hearing from all of you about the planning and every individual here has a beautiful perspective on what the community needs. And now it's time to try to fast-track a little bit and get those bigger, most important ideas to the community now. Rather than waiting for it to come, come to us later.
Thank you, and we'll move on to Commissioner Gomez, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Andres, I, I, my first thought when you said that, I'm like, well, where's the money for me to implement it? Because I will tomorrow if I have the money to implement these programs. Count me in to volunteer for anything. And I've been born and raised in Santana, and I think my very first volunteering was at the zoo when I was fourteen years old. If you've ever been to Boo at the zoo, I was a fox. But I think that, I'm just very thankful, I think this new commission is very active and I love that. Lisa could tell you, there was other members from the other commission, they wouldn't even show up. And it was very frustrating. So seeing you guys here and being passionate and really having the same mindset about community first, it's just really inspiring to me. And I really look forward to working with you all, thank you.
Thank you, and we'll move to Commissioner Moi.
Yeah, I just wanted to applaud everyone on their comments. It was a really wonderful way to get to know everyone and. And get everyone's perspective on what they imagine is an ideal situation for our community and our green open spaces. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, and then we'll go to Commissioner Nelson.
Yeah, I'm sorry I was late, but yeah, no, I, I think that, I mean, I wish I would have been there earlier. Because I, I could see some of your guys' comments and, and interests are, 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 are important to everybody, right? I mean, we all have our, our perspective and, and, and direction that we've, you know, information that we have, right? So I mean, I, all I can say is I, I'm extremely excited to be able to, to, to share my insight and then, and, and learn from each of yours. I mean, I, I have a feeling that if we, if we all sit down and really were able to have a, a conversation. About what we see Santa Ana looking like, it probably wouldn't be that far different, just coming from different perspectives, right? So, and, and, you know, I, I think that's, that's, that's the, the great thing about a commission is being able to, to help, help each other. Find that, that, the avenues to make that happen. So I, yeah, thank you guys for, for everything that you guys put forward there. And I look forward to everything going forward, thank you.
Thank you, and Commissioner Wu has an excused absence, we will skip them and move on to Commissioner Torablanca.
Hey folks, so just one thing I wanted to bring up is I wanted to, well, for, for next meeting. I wanted to kind of see how we were planning on transitioning out of video calls. Because as great as the arts, as these are to, to keep us safe. One thing, I mean, I, I love that a lot of us are on the same page vision-wise as we move forward. But I think something that I will continue that is in-person meetings. And not that I'm like, you know, rushing or anything, I just wanted to know how we're going to be moving along to in-person meetings.
Yeah, can I speak to that really quick? We, the, the same as the city council, we're waiting until the governor's orders to go back to in-person meetings. We're having a real issue, I, I don't see an issue with the park and rec commission, but with the youth commission, is they can't get rides. And we can't give them Uber, we, because they're too young and we're trying to get them to the meeting. So we're trying to figure out a way to keep video conferencing. But that's another story, but Parks and Recreation Commission will, you know. If there's times where you have to, because you're working or something's going on that you have to video conference in. That's what I'm trying to figure out with the city attorney to see if we can make that happen. And so we'll keep you posted on that, but as soon as I know something, we will, we will let the, the commission know. But our next meeting will definitely be through June, will be video conferencing. Then if something changes, we'll let you guys know. And so think of that when you're thinking of the, the date and the time for the meetings in the future. Think about the in-person meetings and what works for your schedule, thank you.
Thank you, and I believe my comments are last. I really want to echo what everyone is saying, this is a wonderful commission, it's my first commission and I'm honored to be a part of it. I would encourage each of you, this is something that within ward one, we met, all of the commissioners met virtually. Our council member brought us together, we heard each other's kinds of visions for what we want. And this is a really great time to have that interdepartmental communication. We talked so much about youth services, it'd be great to get the youth commissioners that are in your ward, get their opinions, because they're the youth. We also talked about businesses and I think that, you know, accessing businesses and accessing housing and planning. So, you know, I encourage you all, if that's something that hasn't been done within your ward. And if your council member hasn't taken initiative with that, I would encourage you to say, hey, I want to meet my other commissioners, I want to. There are things that we're talking about in the parks master plan that would go really great with the general master plan, I want opinions, I want comments. But yeah, that's just something that I think, and then. Lisa, just to talk about, I know you're talking with the, the city attorney, accessibility is a huge issue with. And it's something that's been brought up with Zoom calls, so I don't think it would be an issue. I know, speaking for myself. You know, talking about mental health and there are some times where being on a Zoom call is a lot easier than getting up and going out of the car and.
Absolutely.
You know, making sure that we keep that available, I do want to meet all of you in person as well, but keeping that option available.
Great.
And with that, we will go ahead and move on to the conclusion of the meeting. The next special meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May twenty-seventh. I know that that's probably going to change because we're going to find a time, but that's what it's scheduled for, Thursday, May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one at four PM. Is there a motion?
I'm sorry, is that good? Because it won't change before that time, so is May twenty-seventh? Does that work for everyone for the next meeting?
It, it, it does, except I, I, I hope I don't have another day like I had today. Four o'clock's kind of a.
It is early, yeah.
Bit early, but if we could, if we could push it, maybe, maybe till even six would be great, but.
Is the commission. Can they meet at, can you meet in the middle, five o'clock, would that be?
I was going to say five or five thirty was best for me, because I am a mom and then there's night routines that I have. When we have it at six o'clock, I'd rather not neglect my children, so we could do like five, five thirty, I'll look, I'll be okay with that.
Five or five thirty is a good compromise for me as well.
I think five thirty would be perfect for me. I could probably even do four on this next one, I just, I'm just don't want to have a, you know, there's. Yeah, plenty of moving parts, but.
How about, how about, is everyone okay with five thirty? For the next meeting? Okay, and it won't, and, you know, typically we won't, we won't be this long to. Impede on your schedule, but, so if we go five thirty to six thirty, would that be okay? Commissioner Gomez, okay, got it. Okay, so we'll, we'll schedule it for five thirty on the twenty-seventh. Great, thank you.
Perfect, so I will amend that, the next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May twenty-seventh at five thirty. And then is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'd like to motion to adjourn the meeting.
Commissioner Torablanca motions, does anyone second?
I second.
And that was Vice Chair Ramirez, perfect. So we'll go ahead and we'll go around, so Recording Secretary, could you go ahead and call, roll call for the vote?
Thank you, Chairperson. Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gomez?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Moi?
Yes.
Commissioner Torablanca?
Yes.
Chairperson Gutierrez?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and so meeting is adjourned at six oh nine. Bye, everyone.
Bye, thank you.